Quiet.
What happened to Alderman Woods?
He what?
Okay. All right, roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Here.
Alderman Jacob?
Here.
Alderman Messina? Alderman Sorrentino?
Here.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Here.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Woods?
And Roy.
How about me?
Well, wait a minute. Oh, oh. R. Wesley?
Here.
I'll be there. And I did say Woods, but he's...
He stepped out.
Okay, Mayor Police.
Here. Clerk of Court and President, please stand and join Pledge of Allegiance. My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I need a motion to approve the City Council minutes of Ju...
Okay, hold on, guys.
Eugene and Sonny. Any questions, corrections?
Have it already been made?
All in favor?
Aye.
Absent.
One abstention?
Oh, yeah.
Unopposed? Okay. One abstain. Okay. Do any citizens wish to be heard on matters not listed on the agenda? Yes, if you could go to the podium, now, hold on, Marshall. Yes, sir. Go to state your name and address.
No kidding.
Okay, Alderman Woods has returned.
Let me see it.
Hi, I'm Scott Horrej, and I live at 406 Woodside.
Excuse me, can I have the spelling of your name, please? Thank you.
I'm here today seeking reimbursement in full or part for the replacement cost of my sump pump due to the decreased useful life caused by the pump's excessive operation caused by the city water leak. On July 3rd, I noticed my sump pump filling at a fast rate during a period that the pit should not be filling. No rain occurred for the past few days. The public works were notified and the issue, notified of the issue on July 5th. They came out that day. They eventually determined there was a city water leak. They did repair the leak, which stopped my sump pump from filling on the 12th of July, nine days later. My sump pump operated approximately 10 seconds 24 hours a day for nine days. So I'm seeking partial or full reimbursement.
All right. Thank you for your comment, and the staff will, the attorney will work with the manager. Do we have your phone number and everything?
No.
What's that? Maybe you want to just fill out a sheet? There's a sheet, this way we'll hand it to the...
It's the green.
Green card. Thank you, sir. Any other residents wish to be heard? Okay. I have no written communication this evening under Mayor's report. I have an ordinance ascertaining the prevailing rate of wages for laborers, workmen, and mechanics employed. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, Marshall. You wanted to be called. Should we do it? We could do it. That's all right, go ahead. And again, name, address.
Sure. Marshall Subach, S-U-B-A-C-H. I reside at 168 South Central Avenue in Wooddale. This is item 4D on finance. I know it's council. If you want me to wait till item 4D comes up, as long as I can speak then, I will. I will actually wait it out, because I think it's that important. Otherwise, I can go through my comments now, whatever you prefer, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, let's wait till we get to that point. That's fine.
To that point?
As long as you're willing to wait.
Sure, thank you.
All right. All right, so under Mayor's report, item number one, an ordinance ascertaining the prevailing rate of wages for laborers, workmen, and mechanics employed in public works of the city of Wooddale. Do I have a motion? Second. All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes. And that passes. Next, in your packets, you have a request from the Water Rats Donation Request for their yearly conference. Alderman Catalano?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion for $500 for them.
Second. Tony was first. Okay, we have a, we have a motion, a second. Any question or roll call? 500. You said 500, son?
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Okay, and that passes. Brad, you have a copy of the letter as well, right, so you can handle it. And one other thing, just so all the residents know, starting tomorrow, the quiet zone will be operational. Next, Mr. Murmish, Manager's Report.
Was it the 27th it was right now?
20th. 20th, tomorrow.
I thought it was in the papers.
Tonight at midnight, actually.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two items. One, I want all residents at home to remember that Prairie Fest is next weekend, July 26th through July 29th. Additionally, the city is sponsoring the Senior Club Monthly Luncheon on Wednesday, August 1st. So if any of the Aldermen would like to volunteer to serve the seniors, let me or Amanda Malone know, and then we can arrange that. That concludes my report.
Thank you. We have two items on the consent agenda. If no objections, entertain a motion.
I make the motion.
Do I have a second? Okay, roll call, please.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley, sorry.
Yes.
And Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Okay. All right, now, need a motion to approve the items on the agenda. Item number one, a resolution seeking to approve a contract between the city of Wooddale and Robinson Engineering for a capacity management operations and maintenance plan in an amount not to exceed $23,700. Item number two, a resolution seeking to approve a contract between the city of Wooddale and Thomas Engineering for construction management of the Salt Creek Greenway Trail Bridge Rehabilitation Project in the not-to-exceed amount of $40,992.11. Do I have a motion?
I make the motion.
Second.
Peter and Michael. Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
No.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. Next, committee chair reports planning and zoning, Alderman Woods.
I want to report, Mayor, a resolution of the city of Wooddale, DuPage County, Illinois, authorizing the city to execute an amended intergovernmental agreement with the Wooddale Fire Protection District Number One regarding plan review and inspection fees. And this will be based on the fire department's approval of the fees at their next meeting. That is my motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions on this? Alderman Wesley, Roy Wesley.
Did the city just put these fees in, or did the fire department come and request them?
Who wants to answer that? Ms. Christie, go ahead.
The fire district actually approached the city about a year and a half or two years ago and requested that they amend the IGA. And with the revision to the fees with master fee schedule, which is later on in the agenda, we decided to coordinate those efforts. But the fees were actually determined or proposed by the fire district, and city staff looked at them and agreed that they were, they looked acceptable.
Go ahead, Alderman Wesley.
So you say that it's been worked on for a year and a half?
Ms. Christie?
No, that's first when the fire district identified that they'd like to look at the IGA.
All right, go ahead. Ms. Christie?
I believe that we started discussions on the IGA two months ago, maybe three months ago.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes.
Standing my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Health and Safety, Alderman Sorrentino?
Mayor, I have one report. However, I would like to make a motion to table this.
Second.
Okay, we have... Questions?
Was that the second, please?
Our second. We have a motion to table. And no questions on the table? Correct. So let's take a roll call on this table first.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman... Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Okay, and that passes. B1 is being tabled. And that concludes your report?
That concludes my report, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Public Works, Alderman Sizmarsky?
I have two. A resolution seeking to approve a contract between the city of Wooddale and Robinson Engineering for phosphorus removal feasibility study and a phosphorus discharge optimization plan in the not-to-exceed amount of $46,400. That is my motion.
Second.
Here we have a motion, second. Any questions on this? Tony was the second. Alderman Eugene Wesley, go ahead.
My question on this is, are they going to be able to, are both licenses due up at the same time? Or are we just doing the one?
Mr. York.
Yes, thank you. We have not yet received our permit for the north wastewater plant, but it's, we know that this is going to be a part of it, so they're going to do both the north plant and the south plant at the same time, so that we do a holistic look at both of our plants.
Follow-up, go ahead.
Yeah, so what I'm hearing is this study is going to do both plants?
Yes.
Okay, that was what I understood last week, okay.
Ms. York, it's for the, I understood it was the south plant last, last week.
That's what I thought, I think it was both.
I believed it.
It was just south.
Alderman Woods?
I believe that that's what the paperwork or the contractor said. The one, I didn't see it, did it include it both plants?
Go ahead, Ms. York.
I'd have to review it, but if it says it in the document that it's for the south plant, then it's for the south plant. I apologize.
Okay.
It is south.
Do we have any other questions? Alderman Wesley?
So then, when is the other plant due up? I mean, why would, so next year, we're going to come back here again? I'm just saying, can't we do them both at the same time?
Mr. York.
Well, both of the, the two plants have different waste streams, and so that we know if we would do it, it wouldn't be, you do one, the other one automatically falls in line, because there's two separate waste streams. The waste stream of the south plant is 100% residential, where the waste stream of the north plant is residential and commercial and industrial. So you don't really get a whole lot of bang for your buck by doing both plants at the same time.
All right, let's take a roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley? Alderman R. Wesley?
No.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Yes.
Next, I have a... That passes?
Looks to have approval of a contract for ALAMP for the Squaw Creek project in the amount not to exceed $794,073.20. That is my motion.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Questions on this? Tony, second. Alderman Eugene Wesley, you had your end up first, go ahead.
The one question I have on this is, is who's going to oversee the construction management on this?
Mr. York.
Robinson Engineering has already has a construction management on this portion of the project.
You have follow-up, Alderman Wesley?
And what was it? Anyone remember what the price tag on that one?
It was included in the design, so design and construction management were together. I could go back and look, but it was a year, year or so ago.
I'm good.
Okay. Alderman Roy Wesley, you had your hand up, go ahead.
I was reading, this was budget for how much?
Mr. York.
The budget on this was $600,000.
So where, are we getting extra hundred, whatever, dollar amount?
Mr. Murmish.
This is my favorite answer. I often say this. Typically, in the CIP, some items come over and some under, so at the end of the year, that's when we would look at that. But there are some projects that come in under and over throughout the course of the year. Typically, when we have the savings, everybody's excited. When something comes in over, everybody's upset.
Alderman Jacob?
I just want to make one comment. Although it is over budget, this is something that is needed, and we don't have much of a choice here, so it has to get done.
I apologize, can you repeat that again?
I just said that this is something that is needed, although it's over budget, so we have, this is something that has to be done. Otherwise, there's severe consequences, so, you know, whatever the price is, we have to get it done.
Alderman Catalano?
Matt, do we know when they reconstruct that head wall, if they're going to make it wider, or is it going to be the same size at this, at this point?
Mr. York.
Yeah, it'd be approximately the same size. I'm not exactly sure the dimensions of the current pipe versus the future pipe that's going through there. But it will be able to, to take that water from the Ward 3 area. The, the big benefit to this is, one, the current head wall, we all know, or people that have been out there, is that current head wall is, is in dire need of repair. And then also, the creek bank, or the creek itself will be widened in some areas, have some pools in some other areas to allow for more storage within the creek bank itself. It'll also allow for easier flow of the water throughout the creek bed. So hopefully, when we do get the large amounts of rain, it'll, it will alleviate some of the upstream flooding areas. But obviously, this is not a solution to any or all of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
After two years of waiting, yes.
And that passes. And that concludes your report?
That concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Finance Administration, Alderman Roy Wesley, go ahead.
An ordinance adopting the, the city of Wooddale master fee structure?
Is that a motion?
Schedule?
Yes, make a motion. Second.
Okay.
Question?
Hold on one second. Gene, second, correct?
Yes.
Okay, Alderman Wesley, go ahead.
I guess the question's for Brad. I was going through this fee structure here, and I have some questions on them. You have the new fee structures on here, but where's the old ones? Why couldn't you put it in the packet here?
Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The reason that the, the new ones are in there is that's what's being approved. And so, to put the old ones in there versus the new one wouldn't be the approved versions. The old versus the new was in the packets back in March and April. And again, like, you know, we didn't, because those were in in March and April, we put the clean, final version in here. We certainly could have, but, like I said, just having the minimal discussion that we had back in March and April, we just put the clean version, the final clean version in the packet this time.
Go ahead, Alderman Wesley, follow-up.
So, we did this version in March or April. May, June, July, three months. Do you remember everything three months ago on fee structure? Probably not. Would have been nice to have it in there. So, in that statement, I have a couple of questions of what the fee structure is for mobile homes. I think it was $50. What was it before?
Do you know what section, what code section that is?
Ms. Christie, go ahead. I thought I saw it when we, was it in the packet with the red lines?
So actually, that's regulated by state statute, and so $50 is all that the city can charge, and that's actually what it was previously.
Okay.
So there's, there was no change. It was just carried over.
Okay.
Go ahead, Alderman Wesley. You have another one on that?
Um, no, I don't have any, I got a statement. On these fee structures, I just think this is a city money grab on a lot of stuff here. So, that's my opinion.
Okay. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
No.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes.
An ordinance amending Chapter 1, 5, 6, 7, 8, 14, 15, 16, and 19 of the City Wooddale Municipality Code concerning certain fees and penalty fees.
Is that a motion?
I'll make that a motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any questions?
Again. I believe that...
Go ahead, Alderman Wesley.
All this is, is a money grab for the city of Wooddale.
Okay. Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
No.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes.
An ordinance amending the classification and regulation of certain commercial occupancy and activity in building in Chapter 4 and 12 of the City of Wooddale Municipality Code.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Second. Here a motion and a second.
I have some...
Any questions? Alderman Catalano?
Yeah, going, going back to that money grab, when was the last time that we raised those fees? I just want to know.
It was passed.
The last time that we raised the fees in the...
Mr. Wilson.
Yeah, um, you know, I don't know specifically each and every fee. I mean, the water rates are more of an annual thing. I know some of the ones in the police department section had been pushing 20, if not more than 20 years.
Wow.
And some of the community development ones, edited for them, but they were not, I guess at the end of the day, there wasn't a regular schedule for review at that time.
All right. Okay. We got a motion and a second. Questions on this? Roy, do you have a question? Go ahead.
I believe this commercial occupancy, this whole thing about the commercial occupancy is against the Constitution. I also believe it's against the, the rules for the city of Wooddale, because we are not home rule. So I just want to make that statement out there, and I really would like to see this whole thing, because the whole thing, how it was explained for life safety, and now it's going, and the building department is going in there for violations on every single year.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
No.
Alderman R. Wesley?
No.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes.
An on...
Hold on, one second, please.
Again, where does, Marshall want to come in?
Hold on one second.
Okay.
Go ahead, uh...
I guess.
Yeah, go ahead, read the motion, then we'll call Mr. Subach up.
An ordinance amending the clarification of regulations certain fines and fees, zoning certificates, site, and plan review permits, use, assess, assess the structure, and allot development standard with the unfit development ordinance and regulation in the signed code provided in Chapter 17 and 13 of the City of Wooddale Code, Mr. Patel's Code.
Is that your motion?
No.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Go ahead, Mr. Subach.
So that, that motion was by who?
Alderman Woods and Alderman Sizmarsky.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman. Couple of comments on this. First, when I saw this on the finance, and I don't look at your agendas all the time, but when I saw this on the finance agenda, I didn't really know why it would be put on finance. If you're dealing with fees and structures and fines, I agree with that, but some of the other changes that are made to the UDO are very significant and probably should go under a different committee and really spend enough time, even with your zoning board going through and making sure everybody understands what those implications of those changes are. I'm just going to walk you guys through a couple of them, and I'm looking at the exhibit B, which was a red line version, and there's fifty-two pages of...
You on a particular page?
I am, so I'm starting on page four, and I may go over my three-minute time limit, Mr. Mayor, but I thought that was for public comments, if you don't mind. So, the first one is on page four. It's for the development administrator. We're changing this, instead of being an appointment by the mayor and the city council, it goes to the city manager. Yes, we're under a manager form of government, but really, who interprets this code as a, carrying out the policy that the city council sets in the direction you want to go? We want to be pro-development or anti-development, want to be pro-new construction, whatever the policy is for the council, I think respectfully you guys should keep that power, and you guys should appoint who the development administrator is. It might be based on the recommendation of the manager, but I recommend you don't give up that power. The next one on page four is a garden shed. This is kind of Mickey Mouse, but it says a relatively small structure. It's a little bit vague. What's relatively small to one homeowner will be relatively large to another, so if you're going to put definitions, they should have fairly good standards for what those definitions are.
Hold on one second. What packet page number are you on, Marshall?
Packet, page two eighty-three.
Three seventeen.
Three seventeen.
Well, mine on the bottom says two eighty-three.
Oh, we are. There's a transparency joke there, but I'm not going to make it.
I'm on, on the old one, two eighty-three.
Okay.
It's the exhibit B to the UDO changes. Sorry, Sean. Do you want me to keep going?
Yeah, keep going.
The next one is on page seven. It's again, it's section seventeen point two oh five. It's what the mayor and city council's authority is to hear, and we are striking based upon the recommendation of staff, one of your authorities, and that's item six, and it's the authority of the city council to determine whether or not to approve or deny any decision on appeal of the development administrator after receiving recommendations from the Community Development Commission. Why give up your city council's right to an appeal? You might disagree with staff, and you might want to hear more facts, and at least give the opportunity of you guys to hear those appeals under seventeen two oh five. The next item was on my page, packet page two eighty-eight. It's page nine of exhibit B. Talks about for these zoning certificates. It says that the development administrator shall not issue a zoning certificate unless all noted violations of the chapter or other applicable ordinances have been remedied. So, basically, what you're going to do is you're not going to issue a zoning certificate until all the issues with code violations are rectified. One would say that could be a life safety issue, but those code violations might not be able to rectify till the following summer, depending on contractor's work, depending on what the season is. Just to have a hard and fast rule like this, again, I don't think it needs to be in there that, it says shall not issue. It should be at the discretion of the administrator as to whether or not they're major or minor violations, and whether or not they're life safety code issues. Next one, and I'm sorry, on page twelve, for site plan reviews, it puts in there a traffic study is mandatory now for any major site plan review. And I can tell you from my experience in doing zoning work, traffic studies are typically worth the paper they're written on and typically what you pay for. I did the zoning work in Bensonville for the McDonald's that got built near Irving Park and Mason, and the traffic study said that Irving Park Road was a D back then, and they said after the McDonald's was going to be in, it was still going to be a D. So, to put a burden on a developer to saying you must have a traffic study automatically, I think it's going to shy people away from development because it's going to cost more money. Again, leave it at the discretion, not have it be mandatory. The next item is item thirteen, is on page thirteen. It's my packet, two ninety-two. It's additional site plan review items. Here's a catch-all. It says, "Staff can ask for any additional documents required by the development administrator to determine compliance with this chapter or other sections of this code." Really vague, really broad powers to the administrator to say, "And any other documents I need, you have to go get." So, if it's for some development, they say, "Well, we need a report from a structural engineer," and the administrator can always point to this, to the developer and say, "I'm not even going to review your plan until you have a structural engineer," when maybe the council needs to see the plan to begin with. Again, you want to be pro-development, you can't put in these additional costs for the development. The next item is on page fourteen. It's my packet, two ninety-three. Are we still following along? Okay. This is the, they're striking, this is for minor reviews. I believe staff has the authority, and Kelly can correct me if I'm wrong, I think staff can do minor reviews now of variances, if they're really small ones. This change took the appeal rights away, so if I, as a resident, come in and say I need a variance, small variance at one sixty-eight South Central, and the staff administrator says, "Marshall, no chance, denied, I can't come to the city council and appeal that decision," is the way I'm reading this. So, again, why take that appeals rights out? Leave the authority with you guys as the distinguished elected officials. The next item was on the uses, the table of permitted uses, and this goes to, the only one that was changed, there was ones that were stricken, but the only ones that were changed, this go from permitted uses to special uses, and as a reminder, special uses have to come before you for approval. Out of all of them that are there are parking garage slash lots and commercial. When you pass ordinances that are kind of targeted, I, I don't think that's really a good idea, so I would say if you're going to make changes to what's permitted use and special use, you should respectfully go through all of them and not just the one out of all the permitted uses. That's all I had a chance to review, but if you have any questions, I will stay here and thank you for your time. So, my suggestion would be, motion to table this, maybe kick it back to the other committee, and maybe even let your zoning board of appeals go through, because the other changes I didn't talk about were with, with respect to the side yards, all these setbacks for residential. We want our code to be as friendly as possible to developers, to residents, to get more development in Wooddale as we can. I know all you guys are trying for it. My last comment is, which I forgot, was one of the changes that wasn't suggested was the ability to do for, to apply for a variance. So, seventeen point four oh four says when the developer can ask for a variance. Fifty-two pages of changes we made, taking power away from you as the council. The one that we didn't put in there was the ability to do a variance. So, right now, if, you can't do a parking variance. So, if Starbucks, who I believe is looking along Irving Park Road, can't get a, can't have the parking requirements in Wooddale, they can't even apply for a variance. So, if there are three parking spaces short, they can't apply. When I represented landowner in Bensonville for the McDonald's, they needed between thirteen and eighteen variances for that approval, mostly signed variances, but Bensonville's staff even admitted at the hearing that their sign code is kind of archaic and kind of a problem, thus needing eighteen variances. If you go on that McDonald's, it looks like every other McDonald's on there, so to say that somebody can't apply for a parking variance assumes that the city code is perfect with respect to parking, and we know none of these codes are perfect, especially along Irving Park Road. You want a developer to have the opportunity to ask for a variance, especially if it's a good development. Thank you.
And I'll speak only to the last one. That one is being worked on, probably be in the next set of changes, the parking variances.
Wonderful.
As far as the other stuff?
Thank you.
Hold on one second. So, we still have a motion and a second. Any questions? And Alderman Jacob?
Just a couple of comments. First of all, thank you to Mr. Subak. I mean, some of these things that you said, I, I kind of agree with, to be honest with you. The, especially the one on three, page three twenty or seven, where it does take away the, the authority from the city council. So, I really think we do need to look at this a little closer before we approve this, personally, based on, based on some of the comments I heard here.
When the motion was made, it was based on the reading of this ordinance, and I just want it to be corrected so there's no misinterpretation. Alderman Wesley read, "Within the unfit development ordinance," when it should have read, "Within the unified development ordinance."
Okay. All right. Alderman E. Wesley?
You said they work on a parking for businesses now, but isn't it, it's in this thing to pass tonight?
I believe not. Ms. Chrissy, you can answer the parking, but that's, that's in the next set of, because I've been asking for this one. I brought this one up a year ago and it was turned down, so, and now we're... Go ahead, Ms. Chrissy.
We are evaluating parking, and the direction from council was to evaluate parking holistically, and so that's what we're doing. We're actually evaluating all aspects of the parking regulations. We don't believe that it will be coming forth with the next round, but we are certainly working on it, and we do hope to have that completed shortly. I do also, if anybody has any questions, I can offer some clarifications on some of the points that Mr. Subak raised, if anyone is interested.
Any questions? Okay. Roll call.
I have a question.
What?
I, I got a statement.
Good. Alderman Roy Wesley, go ahead.
With all these changes of this, I, understanding consolidating everything here, but on how everything's been going here with the City of Wooddale, I've talked to many, many, many builders. They were not, they don't want to build in Wooddale anymore.
That's not true.
Well, that's, I'm just hearing from my, my...
And I've heard from people, it's the best place to build, so we can't, we're not going to have that discussion and contradiction, so, okay.
That's fine.
You have something else to say?
No.
Thank you. Alderman Jacob, did you have another hand up?
No, I just, Ms. Chrissy offered to answer some of those questions. I mean, I think we should have did it, but Mr. Subak was actually, if possible, we should have did it, but Mr. Subak was answering, asking us questions or making us comments.
Was there a particular one you wanted to answer?
I can't remember them all now, but several of them were, he made some good comments there that probably, you know, would've been nice to have had some clarification at that time. I, that's what I thought the attorney was going to do, but apparently that didn't happen, so.
Go ahead, Ms. Conway.
So, I believe Kelly was going to make some, some comments from staff's perspective on some of the changes in terms of legal. All of the changes are, you know, basically policy matters. They're, they're legal under the code, so it's, it's really to this, this council to determine if it's something that you're comfortable with as a matter of policy.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
No.
No? Okay. Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
No.
Alderman R. Wesley?
No.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. Thank you. Next. Alderman Wesley, you going to read number five?
Oh, I'm sorry. I take it that SAC contribution, twenty eighteen, how much?
Ten thousand. Mr. Murmas?
Yeah, correct. This fiscal year is ten thousand dollars. It is a three-year contract with a consultant, so if we were to contribute for all three years, it would be, it would be a total of thirty thousand. We do budget for that in the, in the CIP or in the regular budget. Brad, I think you have the, what was the aggregate amount we do budget for?
Fifty.
Fifty. Fifty thousand. So, it is a three-year contract. We could approve thirty if we wanted to, or just the ten? I just have to give information.
I would just do the first year.
So, it's ten thousand?
Ten thousand.
I make that motion for ten thousand.
Second.
Can I use the question here?
Go ahead.
So, it's ten thousand for three years?
No, no, for this first year. It's only for one year.
Only for one year.
Ten thousand, only for one year. Alderman Eugene Wesley, go ahead.
I, I just have one question. So, what towns are still in this? I know one town bailed out. My question is, I got one town who bailed out.
Yes, well, they're still technically a member. Mr. Murmas, go ahead.
Sure. The, nobody bailed out. There's just one town that doesn't participate in this component of SAC, but all the other towns, well, nobody's out, but all the other towns contribute to the airport noise monies. Do you want to list?
Go ahead, Alderman Wesley.
So, my question here is that town that, not a fence, I would say, do they get all the stuff that the towns are paying for? I mean, do they get all the info and all that? I mean, all the documents and that? I'm just asking them.
If they want, yes. They're still a member, so. It's Elmer's, that's...
I understand, but doesn't...
Going against the flight quiet.
Doesn't it...
Go ahead, Alderman Wesley.
Doesn't a SAC committee, I'm sure you got a committee up there, can't they just say, "No, you ain't giving any money to this, you ain't getting any of that data?" I mean, we giving them free data. So, if we choose not to put the ten thousand, and I agree during the ten thousand, I could get the data the same amount then. I don't have to pay into it. I mean, I, I just don't understand it.
Mr. Murmas, go ahead.
I'm just, they don't participate financially. I'm not sure they're interested in the data, so I don't, it's not like they're freeloaded. They're just not interested in participating in this type of noise distribution.
All right, a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that'll pass. Next, under other business, airport noise. Alderman Jacob?
One report, Mayor. Alderman, the CNN and I had met with Fair about some things that we want to bring that to council. I don't know, does that have to go on the agenda, Mayor, to talk about so we could let everybody know, or is that something? How does that work?
Well, you could either talk to them offline, one at a time, or we could put on, I want to put on a...
Committee?
Under this, under this report, maybe? You know what?
I mean, whatever is best. We just met with them. They, they approached us about something, so I, you know, we want to share it with the council, that's all.
The, the bottom line, what they're looking, Fair is looking to do is they're looking to get a bunch of communities lined up, and they're not, I'm not sure what their objective is. It's basically the same as SAC, in my opinion, but... Does anybody else want to discuss this, or you, maybe you want to talk to Alderman Jacob offline, and, and then we can talk about it. You can bring it up at the next meeting. Just ask each one, see what they're thinking, and then we can move forward. All right, under stormwater, that's the end of my report on that.
Stormwater, I, I did sit in the stormwater meeting yesterday. One of the major comments was that they just felt that they should have been given an update on the storms we've had recently, which I totally agree with, so if I could ask the city manager in the future, whoever would be responsible for letting them know, I think it would be a great idea for them to know that. And also, there was that, the meeting here with the homeowners from Ward Three, it might have been a good idea to invite them as well. I know they were quite upset about that yesterday, so that's the end of my report.
All right, thank you. Approval of listed bills. Alderman Roy Wesley.
Took a motion to approve the list of bills, dated seventy-five eighteen, for three hundred sixty-five thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Second. Any questions? Alderman Jacob?
I had a couple here.
Go ahead.
Brad?
Your microphone's going.
I'm sorry. This, this has been paid, Alderman E. Wesley, but I just wanted to ask some questions from Brad. On the page one, it talks about the, for the skunk control services, they were all sixty-five except for one was seventy-five?
Go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Were they, weren't they all the same, or was it a little different?
Yeah, unless I'm mistaken, and the chief wants to correct me, the seventy-five is if they actually had a hit and they had to come back and rebate or reset a new trap. So, if they actually, if there's a capture, be it a target or non-target capture, when they come back the second time, it's seventy-five. So, that person would have been somebody that actually had something caught, be it a skunk, opossum, raccoon, whatever.
I couldn't remember exactly what, what the... Then, the four fifty for the Perry Falls videography, photography, is that for something that Grant worked on, or what was that for?
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, to the best of my knowledge, that's something that, that Grant is working on. I know the check was given back to him to deal with the videographer, you know, at the time the services were provided, so that would certainly be something that he could better address, but that it was, I believe, initiative through him, yes.
Okay. Page three, quantum lab safety gloves, six hundred fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Is that like a...
Yeah, Mr. York.
Six-month supply or something? That seems a little bit high for gloves.
Yes, that is several cases of safety gloves for our wastewater and water employees, so that when they're playing with wastewater, which is not, things you want to not have gloves on.
Just how, I mean, how many boxes do we typically, and is that, how long will that last, I guess, for six hundred fifty-seven dollars typically?
Mr. York.
Yeah, it's at least six months worth, probably closer to eight or nine months worth of gloves, depending upon what is going on at any given time.
Two more, two more questions, sorry. There's a friendly Ford, some kind of wheel, it was a Ford steering wheel cover for number five fourteen for two eleven, two hundred eleven dollars, and then a few lines down, there was one for twenty dollars. Quite a big difference for a steering wheel cover, so I'm just wondering what the big difference was there.
Go ahead, Ms. York. You're not sure, we can.
Yeah, I'd have to do a little bit of research on that for you, I can get back to the offline.
Yeah, number five.
Go ahead.
No, don't. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Don't goof around.
That's the end of my questions, thank you.
Alright. Thank you. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
And that passes.
Need a motion to list the bills dated 7/19, $485,075.75. That's my motion.
Second.
Remotion and a second. Any questions on this one? Alderman Wesley, you have your hand up, or just, okay.
Yeah, I have, actually, three.
Go ahead, no problem.
One is for the weapons storage, for 1,700, is that?
Chief.
I'm sorry, page one?
Go ahead, Chief.
So, in our evidence room where we store weapons that have been seized on crime scenes or whatever, we had an old cabinet in there to the point of the floor was falling out of it, and so we've upgraded to a heavy-duty cabinet that secures storage and everything. It's a separate inside of the evidence room.
I'm good.
Okay, next one? Yeah, two more, right?
Yeah, two more.
Go ahead.
The page 12, the consultant for the clock tower design consultant for, there's two of them there, for $1,040. Would, is that the Euler designer?
Mr. Wilson.
Who is that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is it under Nelson Consulting?
Yes.
Okay, sure, so, yeah, the, Mr. Euler unfortunately is no longer with us, and Nelson was the other partner, so they've rebranded to Nelson, and since HR Green did not do the actual design, a lot of the design work, they've had to reach back out to what is now Nelson Consulting to make sure that some of the design elements were interpreted and constructed properly, so that's why there's those couple of nominal amounts, I think it's less than $1,000 to Nelson, just for, to verify some of the points on the plans.
And next one?
Yeah, the other one was, that one I can't find, the lease, lease on a case bus, van or truck, whatever you want to call it. Van? Van? So, my question, maybe it's not with the bills, but is the old one gone?
Mr. York.
Is, what happened?
We have, we have one van, the gray van that was recently put back in the service, and that is what we're paying the lease on.
So the.
Go ahead.
So, the one that was involved in the accident is back in service?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano.